Well, the emergency meeting of the select board to order at 6:05 PM on Monday, July 19th, 2021. All content of this meeting is being recorded. Use a product called GoToWebinar for our meetings. You can join in a listen-only mode via phone or via a computer or mobile device. You can enter questions in the question box or raise your hand and we will take questions at the discretion of the chair. All questions become part of the record. Thank you, everyone and gentlemen, for joining and making the time tonight. Obviously, as most of you know, we've had a lot of storm damage around us and also in town the last couple of days. So I declared a state of emergency for the town of Irving yesterday, effective at 4:30 AM, which is when we started getting reports of the significant flooding and damage from the rainfall. First item of business would be to ratify that state of emergency if there's any questions or concerns from the board members or if you're good with that declaration. Basically, we described it as significant rainfall and severe flooding of the Miller's River, Key up Brook, Jack's Brook, other tributaries and municipal roadways, as well as significant damage to private and public property and critical infrastructure.
I read through it. I have no concerns with it.
I have no concerns as well.
Brian, do we need a motion to ratify state of emergency?
Yeah, if you all wouldn't mind voting on that for the emergency declaration for July 18th.
I'll make a motion to ratify the emergency declaration in effect at 4:30 AM on July 18th, 2021.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And then we have some very specific areas to discuss tonight, but I also wanted to just kind of start with an overall high-level list of what has happened and what we know of so far. Obviously, there has been a fair amount of water issues that residents have experienced, you know, in basements and things like that and flooding on their properties and through their properties. We have also seen, you know, washouts on many driveways, paved in, unpaved, that have both spilled out into public ways and other sorts of, you know, private damage like that. In terms of the public damage, and I will, I guess I will kind of start on the Irving side, side of town and work my way across on the list and we have the whole team here who's been working through the weekend. Most of the departments were out Sunday morning, Public Safety, Public Works, dealing with this into the evening, Sunday, and then all morning today as well. So if I miss anything, I know we have the chiefs and Glenn and Captain Better's on. So if I miss anything as I go through the the high-level list, please, please chime in, let me know. And then we'll come back to some of the specific major areas that we need to discuss what we do. There was significant material that flowed over the road on Moore Street in the area of the train tracks between that and the fire station on Irving side of town. A lot of that material came from the area of the tracks. It also came from Route 2 Pleasant Street area and flowed down and over the road. It probably came from other areas as well. They did a lot of work to scrape that off the road yesterday midday. The area of Poplar Mountain, the, I would say, probably upper half of the road had significant damage where, you know, at least a third of the road was washed away on both sides, alternating up, up the road. Lots of large rock and riprap were strewn across the road. We had deep washouts that were probably three to four, five feet deep in most sections of that road on the upper half. There was significant washouts on Old State Road that speeded out onto the road. I believe the state took care of that cleanup. The Kavanaugh Lane experienced some washouts on the side of the road, kind of on the northwest and southwest ends of it along the guardrail. And I guess also on Forest around the corner right there where the drainage is. I believe the state has already begun repairing that. Anything I missed on the Irving side of significance that, oh, and there's a, it was a driveway and a culvert, there's a culvert under a driveway. We're still determining whether that's a state or town culvert or if that's private, but it takes water flow from Route 2 and the area of Old North Street, I guess it is, and out towards Pleasant Street, and that washed out at that residence. As an emergency repair, they actually drove through when it collapsed. I authorized the highway department to break away the remaining hollowed-out pavement and put enough material in to allow that resident to get out of their driveway. And they're currently parking at the old school for now so that they can safely get to and from work and such things, but that was just an emergency repair to get them out of their residence enough to be able to travel. To the team, did I miss anything significant on the Irving side?
I don't believe so, Jake. I think that covered all the big stuff.
Okay. Moving east in Farley above PFTW number three, I did, we did see, I'm sorry, one second. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's right. On Route 63, there was also several washouts the state is working on. Thanks, chief. And then there was some work being done just over the town line in Northfield. And there's been crews from the railroad doing work right around the town line where the tracks are running parallel to Route 63. They've been doing repairs because they had washouts on their track bases and stuff in that area. Back to Farley, in the area of PFTW number three, if you're down at that and you look up at Route 2, I know we've had some discussions recently about water and erosion along our road there, and the name is escaping me, but as it wraps around the Route 2 area and the guardrail up there, the hillside washed out under Route 2 and parts of that guardrail, probably about two posts worth are hanging, free hanging, and it's probably a couple foot, feet undercut of the asphalt. And if I had to estimate, it's probably six, six feet wide or so section that's washed out like that. Obviously, we've notified DOT and we'll be working with them at some point on that. It doesn't seem to be further eroding from, from what I know today, but that occurred yesterday. I think the rest of Farley, the
Wheelock Street.
Yep, there's that. The, the holding pond or the holding, the water holding, I don't know, I'll call it a pond pool, whatever, on Maple, looked like it did overflow during the storm heavily on Sunday and washed across the road, but it didn't look like it did significant damage to anything. It just, just overflowed. On Wheelock Street, the holding pond that's there and then continues down, which we use for fire suppression, is almost completely full of material from the runoff. And I would say maybe three feet into the travel lane has been undercut and/or completely washed away, the asphalt mostly that guardrail along the pond up another, you know, 20 feet, 15, 20 feet up the roadway is completely washed out. Heading to the center, the Key up Brook was dammed up, I guess, if you will, with debris and such at the Crescent Street Bridge by the Riverfront Park in the morning, Sunday morning, and it breached the banks and flooded under the old water tower and across the great lawn, across all of the paved surfaces into the design spillway where the playground is. And if you go down there, you can see on the grass on the sides how high the water was through that spillway. From all accounts, other than we had a lake in the park and across the road, the design, the water management design functioned as planned in that park, so it handled the water. It did not, from our belief, breach the additional rock spillway that's near the bridge. So, so I guess work is designed. I don't believe there's any park damage, except maybe the mulch. There's obviously a lot of debris over the lawn, but it, it looks relatively intact considering.
I can tell you, Harry Beulah was down there today and did a significant cleanup down there today. Today was his scheduled day down there. He called me first thing, asked if it was all right if he just moved forward and cleaned the debris up while it was all fresh. I just asked him to put it on a separate invoice and that was a storm-related cleanup.
Okay, excellent. I haven't been down since, so hopefully it already looks better, I'm sure. Sunday morning, Glenn's team came down and removed the, the, the trees and debris that were blocking the Crescent Street Bridge and, you know, allowed the water to run more freely and that helped clear up that issue. There was a significant, you know, water impact, I'm sure, to residents all along Key up Brook, and we did see some evidence of the water breaching the retaining walls on the east side of Key up, south of the bridge along Church Street. We could see it where the wash had come over the wall and onto the lawn some there, which I think is around the time that we got notified and we're going out there and trying to mitigate what we could. There's a small amount of washout on the south side of the Bridge Over Key Up behind the historic building. There's a chunk of the the bank that washed away. There was significant flooding through Hanson Court. It was not passable at one point or another, and that property down there had water seemed to be at least up to the porch, and that whole area was heavily flooded. There's heavily washed out areas along the retaining barriers. They're not really guardrails, but they're wood and, and the posts, and a lot of that's all washed out on the west side of Hanson Court. The, if you head further north, the the two areas, you know, that are, that are significant up there, Sunday was where Key up, just after the falls on Swamp Road where it, it turns and heads down along North Street, the amount of water was, was pounding on the retaining blocks that are there along the side of North Street and undercutting them, and they started leaning into the water and starting to, to both go down and, and lean into the, into the Key up Brook. And the material behind, along the edge of the road started eroding and the guardrails were starting to expose their posts. So we coned that off and closed North Street at the Church Street Bridge. And in Northfield, they also have some issues on Gulf Road, so they had blocked it off as well, and we did at South Mountain, so there was no, no passing. Local traffic only in both directions. That erosion continued last night with the additional rainfall. At this point, the blocks have probably sunk three to four feet and moved away from the side of the road, four to five feet towards the water and are leaning. And it's over a 20, 20-foot span or more. This morning, we identified that the bridge at Swamp Road in North began sinking as well on the west side. They saw it this morning, closed it, and by midday, we had Weston and Sampson come out to look at it, and it had continued to sink on that side. We believe it's probably down. It was down about six inches from grade at that point. Glenn, I don't know if you've had a chance to check it again today, and if you have a new measurement or if it's, it's kind of holding?
I, I didn't. I met David Brule out there, contractor out there, and put the new signs up that you requested, and it slipped my mind. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. But throughout the day, we'd been observing it continuing to sink on the west end of that bridge, and there's clearly cracked supports in the, in the rock base, et cetera, and it's being undercut. Before we come back to that, on Sunday, the both bridges on Swamp Road headed towards the State Forest, the one at the kind of at the last residence there in Irving, as well as the wooden one that we were, that DCR repaired a year or so ago, were both completely breached and covered with water at one point or another. Don't know of any permanent damage, but they were, that's how, how large the flows were at that time. Jack's Brook crested over North Street and had covered a good section of that roadway early Sunday morning. That also, I think, had some debris and it cleared and receded later Sunday. There were other sections of road where you can see the water swept across the road up near the town line where the, I believe that's Jack's Brook goes under the road. A couple of times, there's significant debris and flooding across the road there as well. Most of that has been cleaned up. But, you know, we had significant flooding across that area too. I believe, guys, did I miss any other sections that had significant impact?
If you hit the major ones.
Okay. So obviously, we have a lot to talk about with some of those that are still significant, but I just want to give the rest of the board a recap of of all the flooding that we experienced between Sunday and today, and obviously, the, the late rain last night, you know, compounded some of those areas. Any questions in general before we dive into some of the specific areas?
Jake, one more spot. Last night, we noticed on Art Street, under the rail tracks, there was some large, they're granite chunks that hold up. Some of the rail system had dislodged, fallen into the road with a lot of the riprap rock that goes underneath them. So I called Control to advise last night. They were inspecting today. When I came down off of North Street, I don't know what they had found, but that was one more spot that had some troubles also.
Okay.
I'd like to add that Key up Brook on, on on the west side of the east side of Key up Brook, there were granite, granite boulders, stone that had been completely undermined and there's, I can see from my property that there's, that most of the granite, I don't know what's holding it there at this point. You can literally see nothing. There's no soil. There's erosion is, I don't know how far the erosion goes on to our property, but I know you can see across from on the other side that the erosion is, is pretty bad in some areas. There's boulders and, and huge boulders and rocks that weren't even there before. It's just a total failure there. My area needs to be roped off, and I expect that all parts of Key up Brook probably need to be roped off so people don't go, go near it, and I'm afraid that, that anyone going near it, since you don't know how the soil is eroded underneath, that you don't know if it's going to give way or if someone was standing there. So I think Key up, that's one of the areas that there's a serious issue so that we need to address as well as others. I, I know that Key up isn't the only one, but just to bring it to to the forefront so that we can get that area roped off and, and let people know that they can't go near those areas, so.
Well, let's, let's chat about that for a minute. Let's, since you brought it up, and it's a good topic. I think, I believe those areas of Key up between, roughly between the Church Street Bridge and Hanson Court are all private property. So I don't know what authority we have to maybe do anything other than issue some advisory that, you know, it's dangerous near the edges with, with all of the washout. And at this point, until things dry up, I'm not sure what people could even have done to, you know, to determine, right? And, and, and things like that. But I guess it's a question. I definitely think we should advise people to be careful, I mean, anywhere near them and stay, you know, stay away if they can from the edges of the banks, but I don't, I don't know what else we would, we could do.
Obviously, FEMA's been out here three times in the last 24 hours. They, they're not the right agency to be discussing Key up Brook with. They're more about the, the, the current hazard mitigation, but we do need to get our DEP representatives out here to have a conversation about a lot of the, the issues along Key up Brook and Jack's Brook. And so it's something where we may be able to get some state guidance, but to the chairman's point, we have a lot of private property that this Brook covers, and the town doesn't have legal access necessarily to the, the private lands, and so we would need to, we'd need to find some way to support our, our private residents and their property and walk that line. So there's a, there's probably a lot of research, a lot of legal things we have to look into, and then there's all of the, the, the concerns that DEP may have about working on a waterway as, as important as Key up.
Agreed. So I don't want to say that we table that, but I don't know that I have answers right now. Maybe one thing we can do is, you know, put out an advisory in general, and we can name some of those things, you know, on social media, on the websites, et cetera, and say, you know, any, realistically, any waterway right now, but, but, you know, Key up, along the edge of the miller, you know, other areas like this, it's, it's highly unsafe with the high waters and, and the banks and other areas near the, near the water have been, you know, undermined and compromised and are just, you know, beyond their ability to retain water right now, so everything's dangerous. And maybe even just at least that kind of advisory out to the public about steering clear of those areas if they see, you know, any kind of slides, failures, things like that, you know, give them a wide berth, let us know, continue to report them so we have, have them on record, know what's going on. Kind of going back to the list, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna circle back to the, or start kind of back where three is, which is Swamp Road and, and North Street along Key up there. We had an engineer come out from Weston and Sampson to look at the Swamp Road Bridge that is, I guess, sinking and, and where the structure is cracked. Obviously, with the high water and it's receded, but it's still very fast, and there's a lot of water going through there. It's not safe to do any kind of assessment about what's going on with the piers on that side that are causing it or the, the base structure. If it's completely undermined, if it's settling, if it's just, you know, what exactly is going on? But we did visually be able to see cracking in the, in the abutment and the, and the footing structures and the rock there, both on the north and south corners of, of the west side that's sinking. And there's a section of asphalt where it's just caved and, you know, it's down about, there's a hole between the, the road and the bridge edge. It's about a foot right now deep and, well, it was at two, at two o'clock today. It's probably gotten worse because it was continuing to sink. And in discussion with them, we asked, you know, professional opinion, what, what is, what is your recommendation at this point? And they said, without, you know, being able to assess it, and we probably can't do that for days, they, their recommendation would be to remove the bridge before it completely fails or falls through. The risk if it falls, obviously, is that it blocks Key up, creates a partial damming or, or, you know, completely, if it completely fell in and dammed it up, it could create additional flooding and undercutting in North Street, a swamp road, et cetera, if it, if it blocked or if pieces broke off and managed to move their way down the river and create issues somewhere else. Our sewer also goes underneath Key up in that area, right there to Swamp Road. The belief is that the bridge would not fail like instantly and just fall and create, you know, some shock wave, but if it did, it could create a hazard to the sewer line and cause damage to the sewer line if it did fall suddenly. At the moment, it seems to be slowly and likely that it would just kind of continue to, to fall until it's in the Brook if it continues to be undermined and, and sink. So I guess the first question is, do, do we remove the bridge before it falls?
I don't know that I would remove the bridge. I think I'd put those cement barriers up and, and, you know, again, I guess if you put any barriers up like that, you have to put some signage up as well to warn the public, but it would appear to me that the bridge is, from what you've said, is, is, is unsafe, period. To what extent, we don't know, but we can't let people drive across it, so I would put cement barriers on both sides of it and if they can't get through for now and post it so the people are aware that they don't try to, if it doesn't show up one day and one day it wasn't there and someone runs in, has an accident, so. But that, to me, would be to start with Swamp Road Bridge.
So we, we already did that. We closed it. We put that out in the advisory earlier today and have, have barriered it off right now, so no one can pass it because it's not, you know, it's definitely not safe. I guess going the next step further, if we don't do anything, you know, there's a risk. There's no guarantee, but there's a risk that it falls into Key up. And if it does, that it creates a dam or semi-dam, creates other flooding, it could cause additional damage elsewhere. So, so that's where my question about do we remove it now comes from. The engineer recommendation would be to remove it. Obviously, it's not the only option, and it doesn't, you know, just to be, to be transparent, could the bridge be repaired? We don't know, and we won't be able to tell until the water's low and we can have it assessed, so. Is that preemptive? Yes, but it's preemptive to, you know, what, what could happen if it does fall all the way? And at that point, you know, is it, it's probably not repairable, so. I guess that's what I'm presenting to the board. Do, do we feel that we want to mitigate the risk of the bridge falling all the way by taking it out, or do we want to wait and see what happens?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would have no problem taking it out at this point. I think we should do whatever we can to mitigate any, any further damage and and that the, the public as well, so. And, and property, so, yeah, I would have no problem removing it.
Just to jump in on that, I was just up there just before this meeting, and I would say that, given the extensive drop that I've already seen on it and hearing the stories about how it started, it's just a, a small, you know, crack and then quickly escalated to where it is now. My guess, I'm not an engineer, but my guess would be that, you know, even if it could be repaired, it would be just as costly as replacement. And at this point, for safety, I would say, remove it and start fresh.
And, and we're not there yet, and I'm sure we'll cover this in future meetings, and we've got a lot of background work to do, but, you know, there's, there's the potential that FEMA could be assistance to help with a major portion of that cost of replacement. So knowing we're probably, you know, we're adding more bridges to the list of bridges we knew we already needed to work on. Hopefully, that's a, that's, that's a path to that, but, you know, that stuff we'll work on at the same time. Obviously, there's going to be some immediate costs and, and Glenn, I'm assuming we, we haven't, we don't have those yet. It's going to take a day or so to get someone out there and, and likely, you know, hopefully it doesn't fall in before we, we get it removed.
Yeah, that's correct. I met with one contractor already out there this afternoon, told me he would have some numbers within a couple of days, meeting a second contractor out there tomorrow morning, and a third one I left a, a voicemail for to contact me when they could, so I, I think I feel pretty confident in having some numbers for you. I I think I feel pretty confident having some numbers for you probably by the end of the week.
Obviously, it's an emergency. I'm assuming that they would be able to mobilize quickly despite all the others. Towns, hopefully that hopefully they'd be able to do that, even though knowing other towns need their help.
Yes, but both of them said that once they get a green light, they would be able to take care of it fairly quickly.
Chairman Smith, I have a question. Have we looked at the Church Street, North Street Bridge to see if it's been further undermined by? By this the last few days?
DOT or an engineer, not that I'm aware of, have we visually looked at it as we've assessed other things around town? Yes. You know, I don't think any of us by any means would would be able to ascertain the difference between before and now and, you know. Some erosion of the of the. Of the underneath of that, the water, as I understand it, we don't believe ever actually touched the decking, so. Underneath, so could it have could it have undermined or or? I shouldn't even say it, but could it have continued to damage or or done anything below the water or below the surface that we can't see? Sure. But I don't know. We we don't have any new visible cracking or shifting or or sinking or any of those kind of signs that we're seeing at the swamp. Road Bridge at the Church Street Bridge. So at the moment, it does not seem to have. Sustained any other known damage, but it's it's early.
And I would just add. I was just gonna say that, Mr. Member, we had our engineer in town looking at the Swamp Road Bridge. And he left that, say, he was going down to the Church Street Bridge. He's been studying that obviously for a few months now. And is very familiar with the the status of that bridge. And so he was going down to take a look at that project while he was in town, so. We have not heard any further concerns from him. It it seems to be in similar condition. To to how it was prior to the storm.
Well, I think once the water recedes, we'll be able to tell for sure if there's any damage. That's going to take some some days or maybe considering the weather weeks, so. We just, I I just don't want people to forget that we need to continue to look at. That bridge and make sure there's no further damage.
Of course. To. The Swamp Road Bridge, if it takes some time to get those numbers and to get a green light to move forward. I know we're continuously working with. The engineers, if there's an ability to actually look at that structure lower, if the water recedes quicker than we're anticipating. And they can actually see the extent of that damage underneath and give a updated assessment on the viability of. You know, repair versus removal. You know, I'd like to hear that information as well, but that's there's a lot of contingencies on that, you know, if the water recedes and if they can get in there to. Take a look at it prior to removal. But just don't want to leave that off the table just because we made a decision that, you know, removal, removing it now is. Safe because we don't know it's undermined, but if it presents itself as viable to keep it and repair it. I wouldn't put that off the table.
I I agree. There's a lot of variables. We'll maintain it closed and obviously keep traffic off of it and and all and keep monitoring it. If it falls in far enough, we may have to do it anyway. Regardless, just to get it out of the waterway, if it starts damming before we get a route there. But yeah, we'll start the team to use, you know, good judgment there, obviously, if we can. Assess it before we take it out, we will. We are filing with D C A M and obviously with D E P on all this stuff and working with Mima FEMA, but we will. Tomorrow file if we haven't already with D C A M to get a waiver on procurement for these things to to be able to expedite them. Such as the removal of the bridge. So that we can act as soon as we have a contractor wind up and, you know, we're still going to try to do due diligence around cost and and get. As Glenn's working on getting a couple of costs, but we also know it needs to be expeditious, so. That being said, I want to make a motion that we remove the Swamp Road Bridge. As as quickly as possible. Depending on any other option to assess before we have a crew ready to remove it. All in favor? Bye.
I I I was.
Thank you, Bill.
I think Bill beat Scott by a half second. Just a few feet up the road where Kia turns next to North Street, the undermining there. It's it's our belief from some history from other residents that that had been repaired. Around thirty years ago, that's where the the blocks and Glenn will know what they're called, but the the blocks that are in place and are leaning. Currently are a repair from approximately thirty years ago where it undermined North Street and they put those in temporarily. I guess it was a good long term temporary fix. It it would have, but. That's the next area that needs some immediate repair. Before we, if we have any more water, we may have a bigger issue where it actually takes out part of North Street. Currently, it hasn't yet. The current recommendation and review as we've worked with some contractors and and our team to look at it. As well as the engineer on site took a quick look, I believe we still have. Plan to have another engineer from Western Sampson here tomorrow to look at that repair specifically. In more detail, but the recommendation at this point is to take some of those blocks out. That are leaning before they fall in or. And also to relieve some pressure on the underlying ones. That are shifting. Would be to. Cut a path slightly east of where Kia is now, where the water naturally went when it was flooding on Sunday. Cut that a little deeper and actually allow it to fork and and naturally go both both paths to relieve some of the pressure at the roadside. And reinforce the banking over there for the work as well as the side of North Street with some very large rip rap. Two to four foot rip rap base along the river bed outside of these blocks. Or into the river from these blocks and then rebuild. Rebuild the side basically out into the water from from North Street up, rebuild the banking with rip rap. Which will deflect some of the pressure of the water as well as, you know, take the brunt of that without allowing any more undermining. And then rebuild the roadside and replace the guard rail. The guard rail is hanging and leaning. In, you know, away from the road a good couple of feet right now. So that would be emergency repair work to ensure that we don't lose the road in that area and. It may not be, you know, it's not a permanent fix, but it would it would get us repaired from where we are right now. Currently, because of the risk. The beyond local traffic only, that side of the road is coned off and doesn't allow for. Vehicle traffic. Because, you know, risk of of a giving way or or anything like that. So once that work's done, assuming all of that was successful, if we if we authorize it, then we expect that it would be safe to open for travel again. On that side. In the interim, what we're planning to do, or what my recommendation was, depending on any. Other wish of the board is to Jersey very off that section of road. From traffic, we'll put up signage near the Swamp Road Bridge and a north of of this issue. That it's a one lane road ahead and put up stop signs at the Jersey barriers and. Expect traffic to alternate self, you know, self monitored alternating traffic in both directions to be able to reopen the road fully. Should that road give, should the edge of North Street give way or further, you know, erosion or undermining because of rain or whatever? Then the recommendation would be to close the road from the. Last residence south of this area of north. And the first residence north of this area and it would be local traffic only either coming up or or coming down from from Northfield. And have to go the other directions if if it becomes more unsafe. But the short term, until we can do a repair, assuming it doesn't fail any further, would be just to to limit it down to one lane and. And, you know, lots of signage and and marking for. Motorists to understand what's changed and and to use caution. So that's that's that section right now.
We do have the go ahead to move those Jersey barriers over in the morning. The transportation is all set up for those to be moved over tomorrow, so we will get that set up tomorrow, get the signage up.
I have a question on the rip rap. Glenn, was that something that your crew was going to do or is that something that it would be hired out?
No, that's hired out. That's that's machinery much bigger than what we have.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
And while if the board is okay with that path, we would want to move expeditiously, obviously. We've already notified the Concom Chair and he has given some, you know, his. His approval of of doing what we have to, you know, in within the brook to. To mitigate the emergency. We also need the D A P and and, you know, D C A M waiver and all those things as well, so. We're actively working on that stuff as well.
Yes, I'm an improve, I I'm in favor of the Jersey barriers on North North Street and blocking off one lane.
Likewise.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead then. I know you have the contractor lined up. We'll do that in the morning. I I wouldn't speak for Northfield, but. We believe that they may have complete their Gulf Road repairs tomorrow as well, so we may open the road again. And and once we have our Jersey barriers in place. For through traffic. The in in regards to the repair or the temporary repair of the rip rap and 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 such. Any questions from the board? Does the board wish to to authorize that to to proceed as well?
Yeah, I'd like to see that go forward. I've also seen that done in other places on a more permanent basis. So I'm not sure if that could be looked at as a permanent solution. But I'd be in favor of them moving quicker on that one to get that done.
I as well.
I guess I'll just for the record, I'll make a motion that we. Do the emergency repair to the North Street retaining wall along Kia Brook. As described. During the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? The. Just to your comments, Scott, some of the engineers mentioned that some of those type repairs have been done more west of us during some of the. Damage from Irena years back and 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 definitely some of that has been permanent. One conversation we need to have when we discuss what we do about the Swamp Road Bridge. Long term. There has been some discussion with the engineers about rerouting or or putting that bridge in a different location and so that may tie into whether or not this is a permanent fix. Or in this area even, because there have been some recommendations about how do we look at the traffic flow where the Swamp Road Bridge was. Or or soon to be was and potentially move that somewhere has better sightlines and or better, you know, approaches. Then then what's there now, because that's a difficult narrow access right now to cross with one vehicle at a time. So. So when we look at that holistic repair, it may include a permanent solution to this to this retaining wall and that may be rip rap. There are some comments here, some from the public, there's a comment about not receiving mail on North Street. That may be true with the road closed signs. They may have been fortunately some of the few who who. Heeded that warning and and didn't try to go up there anyway. Hopefully, we will have it open tomorrow, so if they didn't receive it yesterday or or tomorrow, though, or today or tomorrow, they'll receive it the following day. Otherwise, I would say they should contact the post office and see if they can make other arrangements. The comment about the Kia Brook issue. That those stones are. And and have no support, et cetera. Here I can I can unmute you if you'd like to speak. I'm gonna, I click. I can unmute you, let me see. Yeah, yourself muted. So if you'd like to. Feel free. I'm not sure what what we can do on the private property, but I welcome your comments.
This is something that I'm very passionate about and obviously I have been talking with Brian about it from probably the first year that he started here. And that is that the the walls of the brook were not built by people. They were built by either the US government or by the Massachusetts. And I believe that it was probably after the hurricane of nineteen thirty eight in order to for for flood mitigation. I do not feel that I am responsible for the upkeep of my wall. I have done my best. But when I am out there looking at a piece of stone that must weigh at least two hundred pounds. That is precariously balanced on the right and the left with nothing on the water side. And I can only see water where my grass used to be on the on the east side. I I. The comments about that it's private property and that you can't come on. I've had people cross my property to go fishing. You know, and I can't stop them because it's a public waterway. So please take this seriously and and. Take it seriously soon because I I'm seeing across the brook. Who is it? The, I can only call them the people from Texas. That moved in and they put up a fence and now the fence is almost in the brook. Because there's a big chunk of of ground that has now just. Evaporated. We know it didn't evaporate. It went down the brook. This is not a manmade. I'm I'm just very concerned and obviously this is something I'm very passionate about, so. Please take it as seriously as I take it.
I I just want to assure you. I'm sorry?
I saw Bill raise his eyebrows.
I I want to assure you, I take it seriously. This is this, you know, we don't want to see any damage to anyone's property or or any, you know, additional.
I don't want to see any injuries.
Injuries and and et cetera, absolutely. At the same time, you know, we also have to work within the confines that we have, as you all know, so. We we need to to understand what that is and what we can and can't do and what we can, you know, assist with. You know, we can look at the property and understand who, you know, who has ownership of that area. Well. While I'm concerned about what it's doing and what's happening, I mean, just like, just like I've set up at at the edge of North Street. That is also private property and we will need the permission of the landowner to do any work in the river because and and in that area. Because that is. We'll have to go far enough off of the road layout that we're outside of the town of Irving's property and right of way and 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 layout, so. It it isn't that we aren't concerned about it. I'm just not sure what we can do about it. You know, and and the town, it doesn't sound like the town built it. The town doesn't own that property and so I'm not. I'm definitely not well versed in what we could even do as a town to to mitigate it. Obviously, I don't want to see yards and walls and and all all of that flooding and and washing away and I don't want to see people get injured or any of that. So I think all of us feel that way. But. You know, I know, I know this has been a concern of of yours and of lots of residents in the area for a long time about what, you know, what gets done there and. I I don't have that answer, but, you know, we're glad to help figure out how we can get to an answer. Just don't know what that answer is going to look like.
I'm. I'm accepting of your answer, but I'm certainly not satisfied.
And I I welcome if if Scott or Bill has anything that they. Add, but I, you know, I'm not, not to put you guys on the spot.
That's fine. I was just waiting. I was waiting to chime in. So, you know, when I was listening to Linda and talk about. The historical nature of how that came to be. My assumption is there have to be some records of right of way access or transfer of owner. My assumption is there have to be some records of right-of-way access or transfer of ownership or, you know, just ownership in general. And I would agree with Linda that I don't believe that it is, you know, riverbanks generally are not left to the general public to take care of, especially when there, you know, major waterways running through a town like that. Which I would classify that one as. I don't, I'm stuck with you, Jacob, because I, is I don't know where, you know, where to turn to. But I would imagine that there has to be some governmental agency or state agency that could, we could lean on and say, where do we go from here with this Brook? Because it's being undermined, which if it continues, will put, you know, residents at risk or passersby's at risk if they're in there using that waterway. So not to say that, yeah, not to say that it's something that we shouldn't do. It's not within our purview to just start that work tomorrow and do repairs on that. The same we would with other roadways that need immediate repair for, you know, traveling. So I, I think, I'm gonna grant to Jacob that it is an important one, but it's also on a second tier below. Making sure all the roadways and bridges for safe travel with vehicles and pedestrians are looked at. And while we're doing that, we can simultaneously figure out, is there a mechanism? Is there an ownership of that? Is there, you know, where, where is that historical nature to tell us where to go?
Thank you, and I'm sure that's exactly what Jake meant as well. I know there's no animosity. I'm, I'm just very passionate and I feel like I have been asking about this for so many years that it's falling on deaf ears. And, you know, Scott, you talk about there being records. I mean, how many streets did we have that weren't either recorded or?
When I say that, I knew, I, I know that the record keeping, you know, if you go back anything more than about a hundred years is
I think if you go back more than ten.
Fair enough.
I would just like to add that, that everyone knows and the state knows that, that residents don't own the public, public water canals and rivers that pass through cities and towns. We don't own them. We can't own them. The state owns them. Now, is the state gonna come in and do anything? I, I don't know. I, I suspect from arguments I've heard in other places where, where there's been severe damage by storms and, and reshaping of the, of the canals and waterways that they fought tooth and nail against helping those communities out. And then gradually and did come to, to help in Holly as, as an example. By some aid in, in helping reshape those areas. But at, at a minimum, we need to determine what the what the deficiencies of Kia Brook, Brooks, Jack's Brook, Pete's Dam, all of those things need to be looked at holistically to determine what, what the deficiencies are and exactly where they are. And, and what damage has been, has resulted from, from no maintenance for decades and no upkeep to it at all, just storm after storm after storm. And, and then move forward in a, in a reasonable, logical way. As well as taking care of those discussions that we need to have as to who's responsible for what. And, and getting permission from homeowners, which I don't think there's any homeowner on Kia Brook that would be against the town coming in and, and putting up barriers or doing whatever they needed to do to protect property and protect the Brook itself. So I don't see that as a, as a, something that would stop us moving forward as a community. It's, it's just another part of everything that we do on a daily basis and, and fixing and improving that we need to fix and improve.
And Jake, I'll let you mute me in one more second. I, I, I would invite the select board and Brian to please come over onto the property. I put a couple of stakes up. I had a piece of tape from the last time they did the driveway. But it's obviously not like a fully safety area because I only had two stakes and, and one piece of tape. So please come over because I'd be more than happy to show you what happened on our property. I can show you across the Brook. And it's also a very good vantage point for handsome, handsome court in the corner where that is. And with that, again, I thank you all. Brian, please don't take any of this personally. I know you've been working on this for probably some odd years, but have had five thousand and three other things to do that were more pressing and I thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and a couple of things that came to mind while all of you were talking about it that I wanted to add. Unfortunately, it shouldn't be more flooding that, or, or damage that causes us to, to move things up in a priority list. But unfortunately, sometimes that's, that's how this goes. We have, as we've met with Mima, discussed, you know, what, what exists, if anything, for residents and for damage on private property and such. And so far have not had a lot of luck, but will be continuing to include that in our conversations to see if there's anything that we can leverage, you know, during this that would help any, any property owner out with any of the sort of damage that we're talking about. The other thing, we did look a little bit at the properties because of, you know, concerns and, and questions about it. And from my understanding in the deed research, while I'm not saying anyone owns the, the Brook. The, the property lines from, from what I've been told. The North Street properties own both sides of the Brook in terms of the property. That their property lines go past the, the walls on the Church Street side. So all of the, if you will, all of the sides of the Brook are part of the North Street properties. As opposed to any of the Church Street properties, but that's, that's just what I've been led to believe. And I will let Brian chime in with anything that he has to add on this, knowing he has done a lot of work over the years and, and recently.
Well, I, I have personally not done all of the work. Jackie does a lot of our deed research and she has pulled the deeds and, and all of this, this location. And it is accurate to say that the properties on the, the North Street side have deeds that specifically use Kia Brook on the eastbound side as their boundary marker. So that is recorded in the deeds. Again, waterways are often considered public, public use. And so, so I, I don't know about the actual ownership of the, the retaining walls. When Linda and I first started having those conversations a few years ago, we have done the research looking for when those walls would have been created. To Scott's point, that should be recorded. The ownership of the dam that we call Pete's Pond is owned and it is recorded and that is, is private property. And we were, through doing this research, able to identify that and confirm who, who owns that property. So we have been looking for ownership of the walls and we have not been successful. Many of you know Mariah and her work, one of her first projects assigned to her was to research Kia Brook and work with the state agencies that would have jurisdiction over this and work with the Concom. And that work has been done to a certain extent. We've invited state agencies out to come and research this property, this project with us. And, and to, you know, everybody's point, there's usually competing priorities throughout the state. And so we've been trying to get the state to, to treat this as a priority with us. Often people look at Kia Brook and think it's a calm stream and they don't necessarily recognize the damage you can do when it is flooding at its, at its peak. So we, we did record it during this flood so that we can send that to our state counterparts so that we can work on that with engineers. So the town is by no means shying away from the severity of the concern. I think there's a lot of question marks as to how we rectify this. And even if we, even if we are able to pull all the necessary federal, state and, and obviously private parties to the table to create one plan and one solution. The, the timeline and the funding behind all of that is also another question mark that we're all gonna have to answer. And so, so it's a very complex issue and unfortunately crisis is typically one that's driving this, this immediacy. And obviously it's not a quick solution. So I will be glad to take you up on that offer, Linda, and come into view the, the concerns and work with you and your neighbors on, on that concern. I wish I had more firm answers than, than I do questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And I would say hopefully the, the town, but also the residents and everyone else's perseverance on issues is, is, to me at least, very apparent when we talk about things in Irving. You know, unfortunately not our, our brightest thing at, at some days like the bridge. But things that we're doing to try to make things better are stuff that, that have started long before I was on the board or even in town and hopefully some will wrap up while I'm here. But, you know, there will be others that won't. And we frankly need that dedication and interest in making sure that they happen to, to get all those agencies at the table and make things actually move for a name someday. So before I move back to Poplar Mountain and Wheelock, any other questions or concerns about the rest of Irving Center?
None.
Okay. Just to be aware, the Flag Hill potentially only partially related to the flooding and state of emergency did clog up again. We've had it pumped again yesterday and today. And jetted again today. And they did identify that the pipe is actually partially crushed. So that issue and repair may move up the list significantly or probably should. But we'll put that on for Monday and dive into that one a little bit more. Obviously, these are more pressing emergencies than, than that one because we can mitigate it. But there's a cost to it. So, so we will be bringing that one back up. I'm sure the floodwater and I and I has been, it was clear that that was a lot of what was in there, you know, filling the pipe rapidly. So I'm sure that's making it more apparent, but, but there is a more permanent issue than we, than we knew. So an pressing one. So we'll come back to that one on Monday. Wheelock Street. I, I don't even, there's been so many, I don't even know where to start on the Wheelock Street one. I think there's potentially maybe some fire suppression concerns with that pond being full of material. And we have chief and captain here to talk about that if, if they have something to add. Glenn, I guess you and Brian, I look to both of you if there's even a, an initial recommendation on Wheelock.
For the road washout part, we, we can use the same, same theories that we would for North Street. We could put some larger rip wrap on the bottom of it, build it up, then put some processed gravel on top of it and repair the asphalt.
Do you think we need to replace that culvert?
I, I don't think it's the culvert. I think this, this all came down over, over the swale. Just, it, it just couldn't take enough off the edge of the road. It was too, too forceful. I, I think the culvert is fine. But then again, once, once things settle down with the water, we, we can look at it better. But I think this was just all sheet draining issues.
Okay.
How immediate is that? Do we need to do that on the emergency basis? Or is that road passable enough at this time? Or what, what, what's your take on that?
The, the road is passable. You know, if, if we're doing things on an emergency basis and we want to list them all that way. I don't know, what, what is a timeframe for an emergency repair? What does it have to be done by? What's the documentation for it to prove that it was an emergency? Because the, the road is fully passable. I think we've lost like only like three feet on the side of that. There's no structures. There's no sewer issues there. It's all private system.
I think our concern was whether or not that erosion continued and whether or not you would lose any more of the, the base material and the stability of that road surface.
Yeah, and it's, it's always a challenge at, at the bottom of a big hill like that. I, I don't think it's nowhere near as bad as what Popper Mountain was and the issue that's, could be ahead of us on North Street. But we, we'll get to it as, as quick as we can and I'm sure we can probably even get there probably by Thursday or Friday to get some material in there. At least just get it backed up.
So, so I just, I'll just say, my personal opinion in general is that the idea that, that even a few feet of roadway is eroded just is concerning. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to make light of that to say, does it need to be emergency or not? I think it, it's, it's concerning that, that we have road eroding. And if we have additional rainfall, and at this rate, it seems like that's never ending. The risk of additional erosion or, you know, complete failure and, and things like that need to also be something we consider. So.
Oh, absolutely. No, I wasn't taking it as, as I wasn't, you know, considering it that it was, you know, a small dead end road. I just, I didn't know what, you know, what do we have for a timeframe to be considered emergency repair under, you know, any of this replacement money that's coming is, you know, if there's, you know, guidelines for a timeframe to be considered emergency repair.
Yeah, and I, I didn't, and I'll just say, I didn't mean to say that you didn't think it was serious. I, I've just kind of framed it as, is it emergent enough? And, and I wanted to reframe that and say, all of this is obviously emergency damage. And maybe more my question to Brian, and, and I'm not, you know, versed in, in the Mima FEMA side of this and, and those sorts of things. To Glenn's point, and there's a priority list on which ones we fix first, but all of them need it. And so it's more about, do we do emergency repairs to, what, what kind of repair? And how does that fit into funding? We may be eligible for to get it done, right? I guess maybe it's that, that balance.
We obviously want as quick of a remedy as possible in this, in this situation. And all of these, these structural failures are tied back to this weather event. So they're all related to the emergency in that sense. We don't obviously want to waste resources. And so we don't want to make a, a repair that isn't going to last. Unless that's strategic, unless that's necessary to keep, like what we did on Papa Mountain Road, that we had to keep that access to the switching station into those reminding homes passable. By no means are we saying that Papa Mountain is open. It's local access only. So that was a reasonable temporary fix. The, the permanent solution that the three of you are gonna have to weigh with Glenn is, is probably costly and, and a much different stormwater management system than what you had there before. So we have a lot of conversation to have about that. That's not gonna be done in a few days, but it's passable right now. For Wheelock Street, as of right now, the, I think the immediate threat is, is receding. But with that being said, if we get another storm or two, we could be right back to thinking that that's an emergent issue. So I think as long as we're working on all of these repairs in the next few weeks and they're all tied to this issue, it's all tied to this emergency and this emergency procurement. I think we keep it on your, the agenda for the three of you to talk at each of your meetings as we need you to make these decisions and work through this. And then I will work with Chief Wonka and Captain Beathers and everybody else on the team to report this back to FEMA, Mima. We're gonna, you know, pursue as many state and federal resources as possible to support the town through this. Because it's significant. This is significant.
So I guess my question to the board for Wheelock is and, and maybe it's not done together, but I'm gonna bring it all together since it's all repairs from this. Do we, does it make sense to potentially have the same group that's, you know, mobilizing and doing rip wrap repair at North Street? Also do Wheelock and get that stabilized and repaired? And I think to your point earlier, Scott, is that the permanent fix there? So we're doing it in one shot? Because it's a smaller area and it doesn't have a river banging, you know, kind of hitting it constantly. Do, you know, is that a repair that we also do right away and then we've reinforced it? And then we can, you know, repavement might not happen right away, but at least it's, it's stored up permanently.
You know, I just have one follow-up question for Glenn. I, I did stop on Wheelock on the way back through looking at Swamp Bridge. And, you know, to Glenn's point, it is fairly, it's passable. I mean, I, I got right by it with, with my pickup truck. It's not a big deal. Is that a fix that we would still go outside for, given the smaller nature of the washout on the side of the road? Or is that something in-house?
No, we could do that in-house very easily. It's, it's so the, the North Street one is, is the reachability in the size of the rip wrap that our machine just is, is not big enough for. Wheelock Street is, is not a problem for us.
So when you said, you know, by Thursday or Friday, your, your crew could get out there by the end of this week and bring in the correct size rip wrap and, and secure that side of the road and stabilize it.
Yes, sir.
I don't have an issue with that.
I have no issue with that as well.
Make it so number one. Yeah, I the second half of that for me, you know, goes to to Captain Betters and Chief Wonka about the 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 water retaining pond there. And that's probably not a quick answer, but just just your thoughts on it at the moment.
Jake, currently, we're, I mean, we're slated to use the Maple Ave Pond. That's the Wheelock Ave one is a is a backup. So if it's if it's unavailable for us for a for a little bit of time, then that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. And it's my understanding we had already been working on a application permit, et cetera, to 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 dig that out anyway because of of buildup, although not.
We started that process because it is controlled by First Light, Norfolk Mountain Project. So if you're going to do any work in that in that in that riverway, Glenn, I would just let Beth Baslin know that you're going to be, you're going to be up there doing something. I I don't imagine they'll have any issues with emergency repairs in in that. I'd just give her a heads up on on that one.
Yeah, I plan on giving her a heads up before we head up, at least a day's notice before we head up to fix the side.
Okay, so the pond is still part of the longer term fix for that piece and then we'll work on the road. The moving over to, I guess I'll ask the question in the discussions, I'm less up to speed on that, I think, about the undermining of Route Two by POTW number three. I know our public safety team has been around with MIMA at all these locations multiple times. So I'm sure that's come up in some discussion. Did do we have anything there? I mean, obviously, it's not ours to repair, but do we have any feedback from any of them on any of that or or Mast dot yet?
I don't think we've heard back from Mast on that particular fix. I know they were working on Forest Street. They were working on Kavanaugh Lane. They were working on sixty-three. But I'm not familiar with that repair on Route Two. There's a few other repairs. French King Highway closer towards the conservation land across from the French King Restaurant. There was a section of Route Two that washed out there. So I know they have some Route Two work to be doing as well. Glenn, have you heard from Jody at all?
Not at all. Other than the first day, Sunday morning, I haven't heard any updates from him. He just told me to call him if we've come across any more issues within their layout.
So we're documenting all of these repair issues as they approach either town property or they're along our layout and reporting it to them. I'm sure they they've been swamped with calls throughout all of their jurisdiction. So we don't want any of our areas to be missed. And and the one on POTW number three, because of its location, is possibly something that could be missed. So it's not evident from the surface. So we'll we'll definitely make sure that we continue to follow up with them on that to weigh the solution.
Kavanaugh, as I mentioned earlier, my understanding is Mast DOT actually started work on that already.
Yeah, which we're very appreciative of.
So they're taking care of that, which is excellent. Yes, Captain.
Just an FYI, the MIMA representative did take photos of that area while he was here. But Mast DOT was there at that time, too. So he is aware that they seemingly claimed that. But it looked like there was more work to be done there, more towards Route Two. They had gone from Forest Street and were working their way down, but there was still a section that had not been repaired there yet.
Thank you. Poplar Mountain. So yesterday, I authorized Glenn's team to do enough repairs to make that passable for the residents. So they spent long hours into the evening trucking material we already had up there, breaking the undermined asphalt out and backfilling it with loose stone that we had and allowing it to be safe enough to pass for vehicles for the homeowners to 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 pass through there. It's definitely not what I would call a a regular road or or safe for regular travel. It's emergent, highly emergent repair that that they were able to do. I don't have an update today, Glenn, on any additional damage we took from the rain last night there. Did that hold okay for the for the night?
It held up fairly well. Mike was actually, Mike and Jim were actually back there this afternoon. Pretty much gave it some spillways off from the repairs, so it won't wash down. And Mike says it looks a lot nicer now than it did last night when we left. But there was really no road or more erosion last night than what was already there. Being that stone, it's just going to filter through. But that road does need a lot of work now.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need drainage. We need, yeah, I mean.
We're we're gonna, that's unfortunate that, and I shouldn't say unfortunately, because I'm very appreciative that the board has allowed us to start using engineers on some of these road jobs. That is, that is a section that we're going to need help with an engineer and fully contracted to do that. There's a lot of drainage that needs to be put in there. I I think the road, the whole asphalt, whatever asphalt is left there, is needs to be taken out. That road needs to be restructured, regraded, repitched and redesigned, I believe. Yeah, that that needs a lot of work up there now.
And part of the repair was also the fact that access to the switching station is via that road. So knowing that we had to make it passable enough that if, you know, like a company needed to get access up there, they could. So obviously, that's part of that repair, which makes it maybe a a more in-depth road than than it might seem for for where it is.
You're absolutely correct. And what we need to keep in mind moving forward with that road is it's not just a a passenger vehicle homeowner road. There's there's heavy equipment that's up there all the time from the power company, whether it's just dump trucks, dump truck trailers. So when that road does get rebuilt, that we need to take that into account for whoever's doing it also.
So this one, at this point, you know, I'm welcoming feedback from either of you gentlemen. But I I think this one needs a lot more than than we're going to decide or determine tonight. And it's a much longer term project to 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 bring it back to 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 regular status, I guess, if you will. First steps, I guess, Brian would be potentially to to work with an engineer, right, to get an evaluation on what where we even start from here, right?
Right. We should have an engineer in town tomorrow. Weston Sampson was able to send somebody up their bridge engineer to come help us on Swamp Road today. And then the engineer that we typically work on our road jobs with is scheduled to be in town tomorrow afternoon. So we'll start working on getting some general guidance and then getting some proposals together for you all to consider. But I think Glenn is is spot on that we need, we need professional resources on this. It's much, it's a much different use than I think it was initially designed to plan for a hundred years ago when Papa Mountain was first laid out. So so we definitely want to meet the the current demand that it's it's being used for.
So, yeah, I'll just jump in. You asked for feedback. I drove that road tonight just to check out the repairs and where they're at. And Glenn, I would agree a hundred percent. There is absolutely a huge job going on there. One hundred percent restructured. The swales on on the sides of the roads, all of your culverts, everything has to be redone. And there's, it's not a patch job. It is not just a quick overlay and make it look pretty again. I don't know what we need to do in the interim, though, because I don't think those stones that are there are going to last as long as we want to. Especially for the travel that that road will have. So, you know, maybe asking the engineer, is there a staged approach on getting this road to a point that is passable, safe for the type of vehicles that are going on it? And then ultimately, fully restructured to a paved road with all the proper, you know, edging and everything that needs to go with that.
Correct. And so with with that being said, if we all look at our calendar right now, I think days are going by in weeks or weeks are going by like in the timeframe of a day. We're at the end of July. Th- this road will will not be engineered, designed, rebuilt and paved before winter time at this point. So we are going to need to to pave something somehow before winter time.
Yeah, I I agree, Glenn. And that's why I said, I think, asking the engineer when they come there is not the holistic approach of what's our final product? Because that's going to be, you know, ultimately, that'll be a twenty twenty-two project. But what can we do prior to winter to make sure that this road is safe for everybody that passes on it?
But I I agree, Scott.
Yeah, I agree. Unfortunately, it's probably two projects. One is get through this season and then one in the next is make it permanently better.
Agreed.
All right. Well, you guys will already be starting on that. One thing that I I on my list here, I realized I forgot to mention about the North Street retaining wall on Key Up. Just so you're all aware, it's about two, the erosion, the the edge of the erosion at the edge of the pavement is about two feet from the sewer line there and where the sewer cap is. So if we do have further erosion before we repair it, we could have bigger issues. So just so you you both are aware. If we had undermining of North, that will probably undermine the sewer line in in short order. So. Obviously, that's why it was the first two on the list were the bridge and that one. Unfortunately, you have to prioritize these. They're all bad, but. Anything, any questions you guys have? I know Bets is on as well, and I think has a list of of other things that we may want to want to hear from residents, but I just want to give an opportunity for the board members and anything you guys want to add. You go ahead.
Can we get a an overall budget assessment of overtime of police and fire and and potential? I, you know, I know people have been working pretty much twenty-four hours fire. I've been listening to to my scanner. And I I know folks have been out there all day and all night long and and medical emergencies in between and anything that could go wrong has gone wrong during this during the storm. So if we can have an update on on both those areas as to any needs and how are the, how is the staff doing? Is everybody okay? Do we need more resources? Do we, are we doing okay? Like to hear from Chief Holst and 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 from the fire department as well.
Chief, is it working?
Chief is on. I know he's been dropping stuff in the chat box. I'm not sure his mic is working. We'll give him a minute.
Chairman Smith?
Oh, yes, sir.
Can you guys hear me? To your, to your question, Mr. Benberry, so far at this point, the PD's only had to do four hours overtime. That has had to come out of, out of the budget. A few of the other officers have done emergency details, but that's been paid through through the contractors. So as far as, as far as the PD's looks, no budget, budget issues with overtime. Obviously, as some of these projects get underway, North Street project in particular, I'm sure there will be some details and some detail costs. But at at this point, no, no issues with staffing and no issues with budgets.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Wonka, is he available?
Yes, sir. He's there. Yeah, I can, I can speak towards the overtime. I mean, this being the just the second week in the new fiscal year, we're, I mean, we're still pretty good. So I I wouldn't, I'm not overly concerned with it as of yet. And Brian and I were talking, I, so there's a, there's the exploratory call is tomorrow with MIMA on what they're going to be looking for. And I think it's just going to, it's an overall overall assessment of how much work needs to be done to throughout all the communities so they can, they can lay it out and then request the assessment for federal funds. I, with all this road construction that we're doing and with the pictures I've seen from the surrounding area, you know, all up and down western Mass, I have, I I don't have any I I don't have any fears that we're not going to meet that that threshold. So I believe there's going to be state funds coming in. So all of the overtime for this, you know, through all the departments on the full-time staff will be, will be reimbursable through FEMA. So. As far as how the guy's holding up, unfortunately, I'm out on vacation right now still. And I I can't speak to that. But I will let Captain Betters talk to the the well-being of the fire department.
Hi, gentlemen. Overall, we've had various calls, medical calls and stuff unrelated. We've had quite a bit of unrelated, actually, medical stuff wise. We've done some standby, a little bit of assistance down into the Millers area. They got hit kind of worse off in some situations than we did. Overall, we're in good shape. I don't have everything together yet, but I have more or less a tally of all that times and trucks and that kind of thing that we've done. It's kind of on my scratch pad with pencil and I'm going to have it more formalized. Tomorrow, we did, we just got back before this meeting, we did another basement call. But overall, we're in good, good shape. We were able to keep in touch with Brian throughout the duration of the main issues as things were going down. And we were able to keep in constant contact with Glenn and his crew to see where where we were needed. If we were able to give an extra hand, whatever was needed and with Chief Holst at the same time. So we kind of were able to intermingle wherever need be. We were able to go through and talk with or at least attempt to speak with all residents that were in the immediate affected, possibly affected area with the brook. But overall, we're in, we're in good shape.
Thank you, Captain.
And I'm, I I know those thingy of you all as well, and I can speak a little bit to wastewater. I know we don't have them on tonight. And I do have an update there to add. But Glenn, you're on the call. So, you know, your team was in long hours all weekend as well. How are they doing?
Doing pretty good. This will probably be a good night's sleep for everybody tonight. The sky is blue and I don't think there's any rain in the forecast. But yeah, we've had, we've had about twenty-two hours of overtime. Most of it was on early Sunday morning through Sunday night. We came in at about four thirty, twenty past four, Sunday morning and left at midnight last night. And back in, I was back in at four thirty this morning. Rest of the team was in at regular time at five thirty. Mike actually just left here about about an hour ago as he finished up Poplar Mountain tonight. So he feels very good about moving on from there tomorrow. So, yeah, we'll all get a good night's sleep tonight. But other than that, everybody's, everybody's doing well. We do what we have to and do what we can and as safe as we can.
I will just, I will just reiterate and and play off of what you said, Bill, to the whole team. Thank you all for all the efforts in the last couple of days. The long hours, et cetera, and the positive attitude through all of it. It it might be all your jobs, but it doesn't make Sunday morning at four a fun thing and doesn't mean that we all want to be out there. So thank you all for all the work and the efforts and, you know, where you can, you know, Glenn, especially your team, you know, take it easy a couple of days, you know, take some time as as people need it to to refresh a little. Most of the, there's obviously still emergency work to be done, but the the really emergent stuff has been dealt with thanks to all the teams. And and so, you know, do what you can for your group to 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 refresh a little.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. I want to thank, you know, you two, Brian and Jake, for coming out and spending the day with us yesterday. You know, in in all seriousness, it it means a lot to have the team that we do with you all at Town Hall that want to be and need to be a part of. I shouldn't say need to be. It is, it's more of a want, you know, to be part of any and all issues that go through town. So again, I, we we appreciate you guys coming out also.
All part of the job. And and thank you, Brian, obviously, for all the work you're going to continue to do to make this happen and and Chief Wonka with MIMA and everyone else to to help fund all this work and and oversee it. On the wastewater front, I didn't, I didn't touch on that yet, and I should before we we go in anything else. The wastewater team was in most of the day Sunday as well, with all the obviously extra water flowing around everywhere. Obviously, Millers, you know, our neighbors have been hit really hard, as all of you have probably seen a lot of. And as we know, a lot of flow comes over to River Street from And, uh, as we know, a lot of flow comes over to River Street from, uh, Millers Falls area. So that was even heavier because of all the flooding over there. All of the pumps down there were running at a hundred percent and above anything that we can measure for, for many, many hours from Sunday on. There has been some reports of potential, um, you know, basement issues in that area. Um, some may or may not be related to the sewer system. So we're looking at each of those as residents have, you know, identified them and we've met with them. Most of the residents have not had any issues, which is good. There is, uh, because the flows were in excess of our, uh, capacity of our systems for some hours, uh, we are reporting to DEP that there was potential, um, you know, slight discharge at the system at River Street. Um, there was some bubbling at those sewer grates because, um, the pumps just could not maintain. So, um, it was off the, off the charts, off anything we could, we could measure. So, uh, we do have that, um, Pete Sanders did, uh, draft that report and I believe filed it yesterday before he continued on his vacation. Um, and I just want to say thank you to those who are on vacation, Chief Wonka, who is on vacation, Mr. Sanders, who is hopefully now at vacation, and, uh, Mr. Duffy, who came back from vacation to help on the, on the highway side. So, uh, lots of people who are out and on vacation, and I think I got everyone. There's probably even more who were supposed to be, but, uh, who are here and have been working anyway. So thank you to all of them and, and obviously everyone coming in on Sunday. Those are the wastewater, uh, issues that, uh, we know about, but obviously there's been a lot of, uh, heavy flow and they've been, uh, addressing those as, as much as possible. We don't believe there's any, um, any significant, uh, release because of it, but there, there was some. It was probably clean water because of the amount of flooding, but still. So you're aware. I know that was a lot of stuff. There was a repeat on the, on the kudos to everyone from Public. And, uh, there was a note earlier also from Chief, uh, Holst, uh, that, you know, while the waterway might be public, uh, crossing someone's private property to go fishing on it is not necessarily legal and is still trespassing. So, uh, just to note that, you know, if you have people who don't belong crossing your property, that's still something to call the PD and talk to them about if you have any concerns, so. That being said, I think that covers comments and questions so far. Um, Brian, did you want to run through anything that, that, um, Bets had on the list from the team or, uh, anything else you want to cover that we didn't cover tonight yet?
I think you all have covered the bulk of it and Bets can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the other issues that we have are, are residents who have questions about their private property damage. And, uh, some are looking for resources, some are wondering if the emergency declaration opens their, uh, their situation maybe to a claim with FEMA or MEMA. Uh, we're uncertain at this time, so we're going to, uh, we're going to continue to look into that, but we don't have confirmation on that at this time. We've encouraged everybody to reach out to their homeowners insurance to file any claims that they need to. And, uh, we've shared any resources that we have, um, for any emergency restoration services, um, so that they can deal with whatever, whatever matter they're experiencing on, on their homes. Um, and we've, we've put out public messages both through the rave alert system, uh, the town website, Facebook. Residents to have issues, if it's emergent in nature, they should contact nine-one-one. If it's, if it's more just reporting of an incident that's, uh, related to a specific town department, they should notify that specific department and then general questions can come to Bets and I. And, uh, we'll work through those issues.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything else that, uh, you want the team to work on before we meet again on Monday?
I don't have anything additional.
I have nothing.
Okay, anything else from the team?
Just thank you all for making, to meet with us.
Okay. Um, yes, thank you all. Thank you all for being here tonight and for all the work. And, uh, thank you, Scott and Bill, for, for making the time tonight. We will obviously continue to be talking about this on our regular agenda from now on too. So we'll, I'm sure have some updates on, on what has progressed and on some of these fronts by then. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn at seven forty PM.
Second.
All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and hopefully a quiet rest of your week.
Thank you.
Scott, did you second?
Uh, Bill did, I believe.
Bill seconded that one. Have to get used to having three of you again. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Good night.